Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. It's Monday, November 1st, at 7:00 PM. We're in council chambers here at the City Hall. We'll begin with the invocation tonight, given by Mr. Whitten. Please rise.
Forgive me, I'm doing a little hoarse. Tonight, as we meet on the eve of election day, I invoke assault to remember our right to vote. Many battles both hostile and political and far to guarantee our right to vote. In the political climate of today, we forget that in last year's general election, we saw the largest turnout in nation's history, yet thirty-three percent of eligible votes did not vote. There are three main reasons often given for not voting, and I would quickly like to debunk all of them. My candidate has no chance of winning, you often hear. The difference between winning by a mile and a hair's breadth. Excuse me. There is a difference between winning by a mile and a hair's breadth. The winning candidate speaks. If the winning candidate squeaks by, he or she would be more likely to moderate their position and not alienate voters they may need next time. The second reason you often hear is, my candidate's going to win anyway. As before, there is a major difference between winning by a landslide and winning a close one. A candidate that wins bigs will have a mandate and will have much stronger courage in their convictions to ensure that you get what you want. And lastly, and my favorite, there is the, I hate all of them, non-voter. In the event that there is no candidate in issue you could not even hold your nose in support, not voting is still a bad option. Although it should be the worst-case scenario, last-dip option. If you go into the polling place and ask for a ballot and then just simply turn it in, this will be counted as what is known as an under-ballot. The people who break down the election results will see this and see there's a large portion of people out there who will take time out of their day and still go vote but just do not feel represented, and then will work to get their vote next time. So as you can see, there is no valid reason not to vote. I would ask you all to make sure everyone does go and vote. The polls open tomorrow at 6:30 AM. Thank you much.
Let's leave this on the plate.
Let me listen to the fighting of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Motion to excuse Mr. Swazer.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Swazer by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the October 16th, 2021, meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, October 18th. There was a presentation with a Rumpke Award presented. The incoming members of the Mayor's Youth Council were introduced. Committee reports, Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing adjustment of schedule of fees. Personnel Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing agreement for labor-related services. Law and Ordinance Committee gave an oral report of a notice of liquor license. Resolution number R-4421, adjusting fees, was given first reading. Resolution number R-452021, an agreement for negotiations, collective bargaining with Labor Council was given first reading. Following comments, there was an executive session, Council adjourned at 8:03 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel wishes to dispose of the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We move on to committee reports. We have six reports this evening. We'll begin with the two reports from the Community and Economic Development Committee, and Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject of the first committee report is the annexation of 0.652 acres from Staunton Township, known as the Sheridan Annexation. Committee members Rozell and Snee met October 25th to consider the petition filed for the annexation from Staunton Township of 0.652 acres located at 1525 North Troy Sydney Road, known as the Sheridan Annexation. Sheridan Annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Sheridan Annexation of 0.652 acres from Staunton Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mrs. Snee, please go ahead.
Committee members Rozell and Snee met on October 25th to consider the recommendation forwarded from the Troy Planning Commission that Council should approve the revised final record plan for the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Center Planned Development Residential. This would be the final step of a major revision of a planned development that started when Council approved ordinance number O-432021, which revised the general plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the revised final record plan of the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Center Planned Development Residential, as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Law and Ordinance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Severt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two reports for Council tonight. The first is on the appropriation of properties for the West Main Street Improvement Project, Phase One. Committee members Snee and myself met on October 25th to consider recommending legislation related to appropriation of properties in order for the city to proceed with the West Main Street Improvement Project, Phase One. To relocate utilities in the project area, easements are required for over sixty properties and have been attained for all but five locations. As discussions with the property owners are ongoing, agreement may be reached with some of the owners prior to legislation being enacted. However, the city must be in a position to file the easement paperwork with the Ohio Department of Transportation in order to meet the project timeline of right-of-way acquisition and certification for the project to be bid in the spring of 2022, and funding provided to assist with the project cost. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Law and the Director of Public Service and Safety to file the necessary paperwork for the appropriation of the parcels identified in the detailed report. As is imperative the city be in a position to proceed with any action required so that the utilities can be relocated to meet the timeline for bidding to receive funding, emergency legislation is supported. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Swazer, Ms. Snee, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Severt, go ahead with your last report, please.
Thank you. This is concerning the redrawing of the wards based upon the census. Council members Snee and myself met on October 25th to consider a new proposed ward map. State law provides that following the official certification of a population after a census, the city is to be divided into wards that are substantially equal in number, and the wards must follow the standard boundaries, streets, alleys, et cetera. The proposed ward map follows the requirements of this code. The certified census for our city was 26,305 citizens. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared establishing a new ward map for the city of Troy based upon the attached map. And that was submitted by Mr. Swazer, Ms. Snee, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on this item? We'll move on to the last two committee reports from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 25th, committee members Snee and Phillips met regarding increasing the authorization for water meters. Due to a supply chain issue, the meters ordered under a contract will not be received for at least fifty-two weeks. This negatively impacts the city's ability to meet the demands of a new construction and to replace meters as needed and appropriate bill for water use. Alternate meters are available and will work with the city's system. The purchase of these meters would exceed the authorization of $180,000 per year while also being able to receive the contracted meters when they are available. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, increasing the authorization for water meters by $50,000, for a total authorization of $230,000 for 2021. The committee supports emergency legislation in order to not delay the purchase of water meters to allow the city to efficiently carry on meter replacements and utility billing. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Phillips, go ahead with your last report, please.
Mrs. Snee and I also met on October 25th to consider recommending submittal of grant applications through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for funding assistance to resurface areas of North Elm Street and areas of East Main Street. If approved, the city will have funding responsibility related to both projects. Staff filed grant applications prior to October 7 deadline. However, council legislation is required to support the applications. And it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to file an application within VRPC for grants through the federal FAST Act Grant Program for resurfacing for North Elm Street and for East Main Street. Due to the application deadline, emergency legislation is supported. And again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any final comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have nine resolutions and eight ordinances on our agenda this evening. If you wish to speak on any of those items, you are invited to come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address Council. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. And I'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening.
Resolution R-442021.
Resolution number R-442021. Resolution, adjusting fees related to various services of the city of Troy, Ohio. The fees are receiving moderate increases only in some areas and to be effective January 1, 2022. This is the second reading.
House Counsel wished to act?
A motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Three-reading rule has been suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Whitten? Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. And I'll ask you to please read Resolution R-452021.
Resolution number R-452021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to employ counsel for the purposes of negotiations, collective bargaining, and employment-related services and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
House Counsel wished to move?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt?
Second.
Three-reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twilliger, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-462021?
Resolution number R-462021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Miami County Public Defenders Commission for 2022. Cost for the year $24,409.35, which is the same as it's been for the last few years. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three-reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-472021?
Resolution number R-472021. Resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 0.652 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the annexation known as the Sheridan Annexation. This is one of three pieces of legislation to be considered. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. The three-reading rule has been suspended. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-482021?
Resolution number R-482021. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 0.652 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation for the Sheridan Annexation. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
The three-reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-492021?
Resolution number R-492021. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 0.652 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation for the Sheridan Annexation. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
The three-reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-502021?
Resolution number R-502021. Resolution increasing the authorization for the supply of water meters for 2021 and declaring an emergency. This is increasing the authorization by $50,000 to buy some alternate meters until the contracted ones can be received. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The three-reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-512021?
Resolution number R-512021. A resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the North Elm Street Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading for the submittal of the application.
House Counsel wished to act on the item?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you read the last resolution of the evening? Resolution R. 52-2021.
Resolution number R. 52-2021. Resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the East Main Street resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Now, the three reading rule has been suspended. Mr. Rozell, did you have a motion to make?
Adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We're halfway done, folks. We're moving on to ordinances now. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 54-2021?
Ordinance number O. 54-2021. Ordinance repealing sections 103.01 through 103.07 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio, and enacting new sections 103.01 through 103.07 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy. This is the realignment of the wards based on the census. First reading.
House Counsel wish to dispose of the item?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 55-2021?
Ordinance number O. 55-2021. Ordinance accepting the revised final record plan of the planned development residential parcel ID DO-8250296 on South Dorset Road for the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Center. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
House Counsel wish to move on the item?
Move to suspend.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 56-2021?
Ordinance number O. 56-2021. Ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 8.140 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio. This is the final acceptance of the strayer annexation, 8.140 acres, which council previously provided three pieces of legislation to the county on. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read your ordinance O. 57-2021?
Ordinance number O. 57-2021. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a petition for appropriation of certain real property and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading, and this is a parcel of the hem property. First reading.
House Counsel wish to act?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 58-2021?
Ordinance number O. 58-2021. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a petition for appropriation of certain real property and declaring an emergency. This is a parcel identified as a valvoline property in the committee report. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
And Mr. Twilliger.
Yes again.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rozell. I'm sorry.
You sure?
All right.
I'll go with record to say.
Okay. Have all members voted on the?
Jeffrey. Wait, Mr. Whitten.
I called his name earlier.
He said yes in Spanish in three.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So all members have voted to suspend the three reading rule.
Yes.
How does Counsel wish to act?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 59-2021?
Ordinance number O. 59-2021. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a petition for the appropriation of certain real property and declaring an emergency. On your committee report, this is the one identified as Rita Rio LLC. First reading.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Right, Grant will suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to permanently remove this from our agenda at this point and will not return again.
That would be a motion to suspend indefinitely?
Exactly.
Postpone indefinitely?
Postpone indefinitely, yes, that one.
Because the documents?
The settlement has been reached with the property owner over the usings.
We have a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 60-2021?
Ordinance number O. 60-2021. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a petition for the appropriation of certain real property and declaring an emergency. This is a parcel identified on the committee report as Tim Donut US LLC. First reading.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. And Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance? Ordinance O. 61-2021.
Ordinance number O. 61-2021. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a petition for appropriation of certain real property and declaring an emergency. This is also a parcel identified on the committee report as hem property DO-8102044. First reading.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to communications or announcements. Mrs. Knight, do we have any this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments of officials. Mayor Odom.
Just to thank the Noon Optimist Club for their Halloween parade Saturday morning and Troy Main Street for their hometown Halloween. It was a lot of fun, a lot of creativity and participation. And next Monday is when the Christmas tree arrives in the square for people who like to watch that. Thank you to PCS Crane in Pittqua for donating the use of the crane and their manpower. And that's it.
Thank you. Director of Publican serves safety, Mr. Tiddrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to let everybody know, the new wards map will go into effect. Really not going to be any issue until the first primary in 2022, which is when it'll really become effective, but we will put it on the website and issue a press release so people can see if their ward changed based on their property location. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Director of Law, Mr. Kerr.
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. City Auditor, Mr. Freege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to commend Mrs. Knight for 37 perfect roll calls, except for a couple of whittens. She did a nice job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Freege. The only announcement I'd make is tomorrow is Election Day. I'd remind residents to go vote tomorrow if you've not already done so. I'd also like to point out that folks that I believe live in the Third Ward and Precinct 2C are now voting at the Lincoln Community Center rather than where you voted before. And if you haven't seen the Lincoln Community Center, thanks to the renovations that have been done, you'll be pleasantly surprised when you go visit them. Any comments from Council members this evening? Mr. Twist.
Just to, Patrick, I think leaf pickup, the last one's supposed to be November 5th. Are we willing to extend that? Because it seems like leaves have not fallen this year real early. So a couple of my neighbors have been asking if it's be extended.
Well, it's a little too early to assess that. You're right, they haven't come down. Some years they come down earlier than others. We just watch it. The other thing that we have to watch is that there have been times when they have come down late. We've had pile of leaves and then they become covered with snow and it takes us even longer. So we do try to be flexible, and if things change, we will issue notification through social media and press release.
Okay. The second was the traffic light, King's Chapel, West Main Street. Is there a tentative time that that will be completed? As I've been quite a few times recently, so.
Yes, I will not go on the record as to say when, because every time we think we know a date, the shipping date for the mast arms and the stoplight itself keep being delayed. And so we are towards the end of the year, even into 2022 by now. And so trying to give you a date would be.
Maybe springtime. I'll state that.
Yeah, we hope. One of those container ships out there in San Diego.
Thank you.
Any other Council members have any comments or questions this evening?
If I may.
Mr. Phillips, go ahead.
I had a delightful conversation with Mr. Schwizer, Councilman, Third Ward, on the phone just prior to council. And he wanted to pass along to Mr. Tiddrington that perhaps our dog park needs to be upgraded. His travels across the country, he's seen some marvelous and wonderful things for animals. So he wanted me to pass that along. It's possibly a future improvement to our dog park. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a quick comment. In honor of Mr. Whitten's first comments, the preface today, why did the miniature pony get a glass of water?
I don't.
Because it was a little horse. Much like Mr. Whitten today, who was a little horse.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Please tip the waitress as well. He's here all week, folks. Any other comments or questions?
Go vote.
It's now time for resident comments. If any resident wishes to address Counsel on on any issue that you wished for your heart's content, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Bradley Beringer, 105 Quitswood Drive, just a few things I want to say tonight. Number one, it's good to see Mr. Schilling back. At the last city council meeting, a letter was read that you had written regarding a moratorium on parking lots. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask about that. We have known for the last maybe four or five years that we have a parking problem in the city. So what I would like to ask, if I may do so, Mr. Council question?
Mr. Beringer, the other thing I'll add is that, you know, this has been assigned to a committee and we're planning on talking about this next Monday evening, so.
Okay. Maybe that's better.
It may be more appropriate to ask those types of more detailed questions at that time.
Okay, well then, that will be fine. I will do that. I will do that. Second thing I want to say is about the DORA. And I'm not going to say anything either way, except that I will say to vote your conscience on that. If you vote for it, vote for it. If you're against it, vote against it. I have to curry, and I don't say this just because he's sitting back there, but I really applaud the passion of both sides on this issue because they're standing up for what they believe in. And that's what this democracy is truly about in our country, standing up for what we believe in, voting for what we believe in. We may not agree, but at the end of the day, after the vote is all said and done, I could hope we all go back to being united citizens of the city of Troy. And that's all I've got to say about that. Lastly, Mrs. Oda, you put out a real interesting letter last week on your Facebook page. Real interesting letter. From Brunns Realty. Man, that was interesting. It's raised a lot of questions in my mind. And I'm no real stage agent. I have some friends that are, and I intend to ask questions about some of the stuff in this letter of them. But this letter hasn't really clarified anything. It's just raised a lot more questions in my mind regarding this Oddfellows Building. Meaning part of the letter, excuse me, raise that up a little bit so I don't do that again. Part of this letter says that because this property is under contract, the offer has to be any quarter to number. Well, it would seem to me that any counter offer, regardless of the number, ought to be considered. Now, why is it not being considered in this case? Is it because it's not what the seller is wanting? Now, the seller will only consider offers meeting or exceeding the asking price. What that tells me is he's trying to squeeze as much money as he can out of this building. And I have a problem with that. I have a real problem with that. And one thing I put out there on Facebook, and I'll put this out to you guys, he's a real crafty man, because what he's done is he's put a lot of these properties that he owns in Troy in single asset shell companies. And he really doesn't want to have any liquid assets, because if he does that, he can't claim economic unfeasibility like he has been doing with the Oddfellows Building. Hence the fact that the $180,000 insurance proceeds were never mentioned. Okay? Secondly, the second question that raises in my mind is why is he not letting interested counter offers toward the building? Why is he only having them rely on the reports? Is there something there to hide? And that's just, this letter has created a lot of questions in my mind and in minds of a lot of others. So I would be real careful about the information that's put out there, because it could end up really costing me a lot in the long run. And finally, folks, don't forget to go vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beringer. Are there any other residents that wish to make any comments tonight? Please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Good evening. Tim Krug, Tip City, Ohio. Even though I do live in Tip City, Ohio, I have invested probably 15-plus years into this community. I am a recovery pastor right behind us in the United Methodist Church. I also am on the Drug Coalition for this county, and I run a program called Rides to Work, picking up homeless and the lower-income folks. My main concern is, I just wanted to show you that I am invested in the community, but my main concern is the DORA project. I realize it's on vote tomorrow. It's really near and dear to my heart because of the situation with alcohol and drugs. I want to make a better community, and I don't think promoting alcohol in the community is such a healthy idea. With that being said, again, I've heard people say that there is not those meetings in that facility, like that's made up or hearsay. That's not the truth. I have 11 meetings, seven days a week, and also that program, as I understand, goes right into, what street is it? Is it Franklin? Right into the parking lot there. So again, I just don't think it's a healthy idea, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Good evening, friends. Dave Pinkerton, 2315 McCade. I think I know most of you.
Oh, come here. Can we have a little silence in the audience while Mr. Pinkerton's speaking? Thank you. Mr. Pinkerton, guard it.
Thank you. At least I hope I'm your friend when I finish tonight. You should have broad shoulders for this business tonight. I'm going to start by giving you three stories that are true and maybe strong enough to even make you change your vote on what you've done before to harm Troy. Number one, our former beloved Mayor Pete Jenkins has a story come from him, and I know this is true, that a woman once approached him, asking him to do a garden tent downtown. He asked her what a garden tent, or she said party. And she said, "Oh, I'll rent one of these four-legged tent canopy things, put some plants in it to make it look good and sell alcohol." And he looked at her and pointed his finger at her, and I know this is the way it happened. Get out of town. Get out of town. Number two, a present downtown businessman told me that he grew up in the former Alcohol Row, the area of Troy that was so dirty and created so many problems before. He said, "As a kid, I can remember men peeing on my front steps and on the street, and one one-time came onto the grass in front of our house and peed." Finally, a lady called me this last Easter Sunday. Once it became known that I was co-chair of this anti-DORA commission, I started getting phone calls. I got probably, we lost track of them, two dozen phone calls in the next month and a half after your last vote. And every one of them was anti-DORA. And I'm going to ask you in a minute, how many of your constituents did you consult before you voted for DORA? That's coming down the list here. And she praised me and our committee for what we're doing and raved on like that for a little bit, and then said, "Mr. Pinkerton, I have a rental place that I rent out within this new proposed DORA area." She said, "Just yesterday," meaning the day before Easter, "somebody again threw a beer bottle through the window of my apartment." Notice the word "again." She said, "I didn't report this one to the police. And men pee on my front steps occasionally of that apartment, and more often, under the wooden deck out back." Folks, don't believe a word you hear about alcohol doesn't cause problems, anywhere. If it's only the fact that it eats away at the human body. Don't you know that the medical community for years has been telling us that alcohol is bad for the human body? That isn't one of these things you hear about from our opposition that says alcohol or this won't endure or won't cause any problems. There are police people there, et cetera, et cetera. My father was a math, high school math teacher, then an elementary principal, then a junior high principal, then a senior high principal in Tiffin, Ohio. He used to come home occasionally, not often, I'll admit, and tell us about some kid that came to school that morning and was beat up by a drunk parent. In my 33 years of teaching, I saw that twice in my classroom, and it ain't a pretty sight. It was caused by alcohol gone astray. Don't you folks know that all alcoholics were once social drinkers? And you have encouraged social drinking, you people, you five who voted for this. And if it goes through, it will just encourage it all the more. That in itself is enough reason to vote against it, folks. You're harming your people. Your, Mr. Tidrington, title has the word "safety" in it. Are you promoting the safety of the people of Troy by encouraging this thing? I just gave you three reasons. Mumford and Son is another one. There were just a few people, not many, laying on the street drunk. One urination seen by somebody I know well. Don't tell me alcoholic doesn't present problems. Besides hurting the liver seriously, don't believe this business that other towns have it and it's all okay. Uh-uh. Everything I've said here occurs in other towns. It just doesn't reach the news all the time. Everything I've said here has bothered other towns. Family problems because of more and more alcohol. Kids getting beat up by drunk parents coming home. I know ours only lasts for 10 o'clock, but it'll show in the kids' lives later on. Don't encourage the use of alcohol, folks. Duh. I mean, that's a given. We have kids pouring into our downtown from the junior and senior high, including my two granddaughters. We have just a few coming from the sixth-grade building, Van Cleve. And somebody told me recently that a few of the Catholic kids come too. I haven't seen that. I have stood downtown on two occasions recently and made sure on a Friday that that happens, that our kids coming into that area, hanging around, being in and out of the rec. 14 alcoholic sales places in Troy? Oh, come on, and you're going to add another one? I mean, duh. I hate to talk to you like that, but it's necessary. And you signed that? You ought to hear the people. I have talked about these three people. Mr. Tidrington, our mayor, and to a lesser extent, Mrs. Andrea Keller. She's not quite as well known. I hate to tell you to this, but you have much, much criticism from the people of Troy. We had to have 882 signatures to get this thing on the ballot. We easily got over 1,100, and I mean easily. People signed it willingly. "Here, give me that thing," one man said before it gets away, "so I can sign it." And if I had a nickel for every time that somebody criticized these three people, I could take you all out for dinner at Colifors. Mr. Tidrington, I hate to say it, but you are very disliked in this town. Mayor, the comments to you were like, "I voted for that woman, but I sure won't again." What was she thinking? And your board members, the same thing.
Mr. Pinkerton, let's try to not.
Make it quick.